...come to order. The day is Tuesday, August 9th, 2016. This is a study session for the Prescott City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Obergeis.
Here.
Mayor Prokam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Here.
Councilwoman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
First item, please.
Item A, presentation by Rosalie Darby, Yavapai Fair General Manager, regarding the 2016 Yavapai County Fair.
Thank you for letting me come today. We just wanted to come and present to you guys what's happening with our county fair this year that is back for the second year at our Prescott rodeo grounds where the fair began in 1913. And I...we're very excited to be back and we have a lot of great changes. This year, the theme is a hometown harvest happening because it is a hometown event. It's an event that is for every resident of the Yavapai County, whether you're into gardening, arts, rodeo, ranching, or animals. That is what you're brought here to celebrate. Currently, right now, we have a large advertising campaign that is going out. In the past years, we put all of our advertising in our premium book. A premium book, though, is really targeted for people who want to exhibit their flowers or their art or whatever. And so, we pulled our advertising from those books this year and we've produced this eight-page booklet. We had 60,000 of them printed. Forty thousand of them are hitting our stores this week. And this is the booklet that's there. This highlights a little bit of what we've got coming to the fair. It is September 8th through the 11th. We've moved our date up a little bit to work with not conflicting with other events going on within the city of Prescott as well as weather. And if all of our fingers crossed, then we won't have bad weather that weekend. And it is, like I said, at the rodeo grounds. We will have many things. The second page of this is the information, the who's, the how's, the wins, and the where's, where to go. One of the big things that this does point out is we do have a new carnival coming this year. The carnival we had last year was not to the standards that we were happy with. And so, we went with a new carnival. It's Brown's Amusements. People who've went to the Verde Valley Fair or the Coconino County Fair, they're familiar with Brown's Amusements. It's an amazing carnival and they offer some great things. One of the things that's really good is on Thursday, as a family who maybe is on a little tight of a budget, they can buy one all-day wristband. And from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., they can bring two kids. So, one wristband gets two people on the rides. For a family, that's a great thing. Our pre-admission tickets are all for sale right now. They're available on our websites. They're also available at all Olsen screens. And throughout different various locations, they can purchase those. A family of four to five can really go, or six, actually, I take that back, can go to the fair all day long for 12 bucks. There's not many places that you can go for 12 dollars with your family. If you can put blinders on your kids and keep them away from seeing the big lights and sirens of the carnival, there is many things for them to do that would not cost a family any additional funds. And our parking is free for everyone, as well as we have a military discount for active military. We're really excited. Our stage this year is being packed with all Yavapai County resident entertainment. This is just the highlights of what is there on each day, along with every night, Friday and Saturday night, from 7:00 to 9:00 is a street dance in front of the stage. I was informed by our entertainment director last night that we only have two open spots left on Thursday and the stage will be packed from the time it opens until it closes each night. Which is great because it does highlight that area that is for the arts and the fine arts department there. On Sunday, you'll see, we didn't highlight our thing because Sunday is our Hispanic Heritage Day. And we have a whole separate Hispanic campaign going on. And Sunday, the stage is filled with all Hispanic entertainment. And some of our vendors are even providing Hispanic food available for them on that day. That night, from 3:00 on, we have a special Hispanic concert that'll happen in the grandstands. So, we're trying to encompass every aspect of our county, the residents that reside there, which are even from our Hispanic heritage. The third page gives you a great highlight of one of our various events. Again, this year, we are combined with our 4-H FFA livestock. They'll have their various shows going on, both on Thursday and Friday, without to be missed. And we would invite each of you to attend the livestock auction at noon on Saturday. Along with the 4-H and FFA events, we have a full horse show on Thursday and Friday, along with, we're really hitting our ranching community with a complete working ranch horse competition, a ranch rodeo, ranch bronc riding on Friday night. And then Saturday night, we will not be missed, our Saturday Fun Night in the Family Arena with our sheep riding, our calf riding, the trailer race. We're adding a rescue race this year. There's the free grease pig race. So, anybody who comes can chase a grease pig and yes, your clothes will be ruined, but that's not my problem. And a money calf. A money calf is where we tape different tokens on the calf and as the kids chase these calves through the arena, they grab them, then they can turn them in for dollars and various tokens of money. And then the keg race. The keg race is a fun event that we took from the White Mountain area. The carnival goes every day. Sunday again will be our barrel racing. So, the arena is filled. All of those events are free to attend if you come to the fair, along with everything else. Our fine arts department, along with every department, is doing demonstrations throughout the entire time. Fine arts is doing a phenomenal job with, the kids can come and paint pictures, they can color, they can get and enjoy it. Our master gardeners are helping with doing some gardening events for our kids, as well as we're adding a farm experience. The other highlight that we have is on Thursdays and Fridays, we're encouraging our schools to bring school tours. I've got schools calling because they've heard about it. The way the school tours will work is it's an educational experience to the fair because contrary to what some might think, it is educational. And the kids can arrive there with their class. They will be greeted with a tour guide that will take them through the animal barns and give them the, kind of the who's and the what's of what an animal is and what they're for. They will take them up through the arts, they'll take them through the gardening department, and each time explaining to them how these transpire to bringing you what is in your grocery store. That milk does not come from a plastic harden in Safeway. It does come from a cow. And different things like that. And when they hit the farm experience, they'll be able to get their hands and touch those. And when those classrooms leave, they will be given a goodie bag with some tokens from the fair at no cost to those classrooms. This is a map. We are changing some of our locations this year. The main entrance is going to be just where it is at the rodeo. However, we've moved all of the animals down there. So, when you come into the fair, the first thing you're greeted with is the animals and the 4-H and the FFA tents and the show tent down there. The grandstands will have our commercial and nonprofit exhibits. And the Mackin Building will house our fine arts upstairs with the garden and flowers in the basement area. We have an FFA, J-TED, Ag Mechanics silent auction department where each of our kids who participate in FFA or J-TED can build anything with the Ag Mechanics Department, whether it's a token in the garden, a crate, anything. And those will be up for silent auction and allow those kids to jumpstart into their projects. The Freeman Building will house our photography department. And Barn A, with the gracious help of the city of Prescott, we have been able to use that. We will have our homemaking and creative arts, along with our school exhibits and our new department this year, the homebrew department. A lot of people homebrew and so, we're going to have a homebrew department. There will not be sampling or tasting, just exhibits and awards. And in that back corner, to entice people away from that big flashing lights and sirens of a carnival, is going to be a free TV raffle because we really want to pull the public that direction because the carnival takes care of advertising all on their own without me having to do a whole lot. Then, they can go down to Barn B where our farm experience will be located, along with Small Spock. And we will be having several llamas, alpacas, and horses on display, along with pony rides, petting zoo, and a goat roping this year. And a tractor pulls, which are a lot of fun. And then the carnival. I think that we've tried to encompass as much as we can of every avenue. Somebody can come and be entertained if they like music, or they can come and look at art, or they can go and enjoy the carnival. And it's coming together with lots of people and help and we're gracious for everything. This is a highlight. We really wanted to highlight our 4-H and FFA department. They, without them, the carnival, the fair is not really a fair. This is where people go to see. The 4-H and the FFA organizations are a vital part of youth and I will tell you, very dear to my own heart, and I think grace some great youth. And that's what we really wanted to highlight and show and give them a little information about what these departments are and these organizations so that they can get their own kids involved. Followed by some advertising because without our great supporters, it would be next to none of be able to do this event. One of the things that we have going on is we have the bed and tax grant that we've applied for, which is helping us graciously because we have a lot of exhibitors that come from out of town, especially with our team roping, our barrel racing, and vendors that will be staying in our hotels, as long with our judges and some of our staff. We're gracious for all of the help and the support that we've got from the city of Prescott. They've been great. We're working with our police department. They're providing our security. Parks and Rec have helped us out and the facilities have been phenomenal. And as well as we're using city of Prescott sanitation for all of our trash services. Do you guys have any questions?
Councilwoman Shiska.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to congratulate you. This has come a long, long, long way since we started meeting at the county building, what seemed like years ago.
Yeah.
And I want to really congratulate you on making this a true county fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Yeah, I just want to ditto that, Rosalie. I know you put your heart and soul in this and this is all volunteer.
Yes, it is.
Some people might be surprised by that, but...
Yeah.
Thank you for living and breathing this for months and months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, if you guys could mark your calendars, oh, sorry, but we will invite you to our opening ceremonies on Thursday night at 6:00 o'clock. I'll be having official invitations out to you shortly. Sorry, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you, Rosalie.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item B, council discussion regarding elements of the structured sober living home ordinance.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Going to kind of briefly go over some of the things we covered last week and I know that, Mayor, you wanted to have some more public comment. I don't know if you wanted me to go through the whole presentation, or did you want to have some public comment and then go through...
Well, I think what you did last time for the two-hour session we had, where you just kind of gave a brief overview.
Okay.
Probably all we need to do right now.
Okay.
And the reason why I'm going to go to the public is because we still had people standing wanting to come up and talk and we ran out of time, so we had to move on to our voting session. So, that's the reason why I decided to give at least a half hour to this afternoon for additional public comment before we actually start working on it more specifically here with the council.
Okay, all right. So, again, just a reminder that the purpose of any ordinance under the statute, primary purpose is to protect the residents of the structured sober living homes as well as the neighboring community. The primary, again, primary purpose is that for any, the law requires us that if we're going to adopt what amounts to essentially a discriminatory type regulation, in other words, this regulation would single out structured sober living homes for special sort of layer of regulation. That's allowed if the intent and the purpose and intent and the outcome is for the benefit of a protected class. That's really the only way that a government can adopt an ordinance, you know, constitutionally that is effectively, you know, singles out or discriminates for a particular group. And you can think of, probably a bad example, but like affirmative action type ordinance, that the intent and the outcome is supposed to benefit a protected class. So, again, that's what our purpose is here in drafting any kind of ordinance. So, the, we're looking at, and I think it's fair to say that what we're looking at is really standards that are going to deal with the low performers. My experience in and with a number of the folks in the industry is that most will probably already exceed the standards or the thresholds that we would adopt as a city. So, you know, and when I use the term minimum standards, that's not, it's not intended to be a negative concept. I mean, the government has, sets minimum standards for a certain level of performance and certainly, as an operator in this industry, you know, they're free to exceed those by leaps and bounds. But that's kind of the purpose of the statute that authorizes us to do this, is to set certain minimum standards of conduct or conduct of business standards that operators in the city of Prescott will have to meet in order to obtain and then retain a permit. So, and again, within the, and all of that has to be done within the confines of the Fair Housing Act, ADA, and equal opportunity. So, that's kind of the purpose and intent at this point, before getting into the kind of the meat of it. I don't know if you wanted to open up to the public at this point for, to kind of follow on from last week.
I could just briefly go over the four requirements that we're going to be looking at, which is a business license with permit.
But we're going to be looking at, we're going to tie this to our business licensing program. So, I could kind of fast forward a little bit here. So, what's going to happen is we're going to, we're going to have, there's going to be an application that every operator, every structured sober home living operator is going to have to apply for a permit. And that, that application is going to require a lot of information, some of it basic, some of it not, you know, name, address, phone number, driver's license of the owner operator, as well as the house manager's copy of the group home rules and regulations, which we'll get into later, a relapse policy, discharge plan, those kinds of things, you know. So, that application's going to be filed with the city and then if it, if it meets the minimum requirements that we're going to have in the ordinance, then the operator gets a permit and they operate under that permit that's separate from the business license. So, this is a sort of singling out kind of permit for this type of operation or business operation in the city. That permit will have certain performance standards in order to obtain it and then retain that permit. There's going to be certain conduct, like conduct standards or performance standards that the operator will have to meet in order to maintain that permit.
Okay, any questions, comments from the council before I go to public?
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Glenn Martin. I live here in Prescott. And quite honestly, I got to be honest with you, I'm glad that you did take that break from the last meeting. When I heard that possibly I was not qualified because I'm not an addict or addicted to any substance, that I didn't have a voice of opinion on what's going on in these sober homes, personally, I was offended. I do have some knowledge about what's going on in the homes and we hear about it right here in this chamber. So, I'll let you guys debate if we should smoke or not in sober homes and with people who are addicted to heroin or meth, but, or how many sandwiches they should get. But I think the meat and potatoes of this bill is the safety within these homes. When we hear about things in the ad hoc committee about people who live in these homes and they crawl through the windows at night while the manager's asleep, go down to Phoenix and get drugs and use them in these homes, we wonder why we shouldn't have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week manager. When we hear about people getting thrown out of these homes and thrown into the city streets, we wonder about the exit strategy, what that should entail. And do we want to put fines and, you know, when we do find out these people throw people out on the street, what kind of fines are we going to impose on them? And also, when it comes to the manager's training, you know, it is a two-week, four-hour class, but there really should be some kind of education, ongoing education for these people. You can't learn it all in four weeks. And when I talk about education, maybe classes with the fire department on CPR, drug recognition. I lost my son in a sober home because he was on, he overdosed on opiate and the manager couldn't identify it. He thought he had the flu and he sent him to bed. He died. So, these are the horrific stories that are coming out of these homes. And finally, when it comes to the managers, if we don't drug test these people, I mean, most of the time, these people are, you know, recently sober themselves. You've got to drug test them and have a routine where, you know, every six, 12 days, whatever it takes, they need to be drug tested because as a manager goes, so does the rest of the house. So, I hope we can get into the meat and potatoes in 2107, actually start saving some lives out there and making a better community for Prescott. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. My name's Justin Bachman and I'm from Prescott Valley. But I'm an owner and operator of a sober living home and also an outpatient treatment center. And I agree with you, we need more regulations. I, I am absolutely sorry to hear about your son. That should never occur. And I agree that there's places in town that need regulation. They need supervision. They need accountability and I hope that occurs. Also, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. And I don't think there's also a perfect system where every single client that comes into treatment is going to be a perfect client wanting to get better either. We see that in every system. So, but how we recognize that is that we do random drug testing. We do random drug testing of our staff. We provide them with food and housing. We provide them with everything and more, to the point where our national average of success is in the 70th percentile. And, you know, hardly any program, you know, in this nation can tote that around, albeit I haven't been around as long as Betty Ford or whatever. And we'll see how the averages pan out in the long run. But I agree, there needs to be regulation and I can speak for ourselves. We don't throw our clients out on the street. You know, there is exit strategies that happen if they're unwilling to be there. We do offer them help and safe places to go. We don't put our clients out on the street and, but also, I think we need to also understand that these are adults. Some of them leave against medical advice. And just like any other hospital, if someone wants to leave against medical advice, that hospital can't keep them there. I legally can't keep somebody in treatment that doesn't want to be there. So, they can pack their bags and go. Now, my policy and procedure to do that is we have family communications. There's a family communications director that talks to the family. We intervene on the clients. The other clients intervene on the clients. We have a mandatory 72-hour hold of their possessions. They don't have their credit cards. They don't have their ID. They sign a waiver on all this. So, they can't go out and just get loaded if they're making a bad decision. This is stuff that we've all implemented into our system. And I think like John said, you know, we have always gone above and beyond because we want to produce clients with integrity and grace, you know, and people who are able to enter into society, who are productive members, who are never drinking and using again, period. You know, that was the opportunity that was afforded me and I took that opportunity and I ran with it, you know, and I'm grateful for that every day. So, I, you know, and to speak from another 10,000 feet, this needs to go to a state level. There needs to be state laws, okay? Everything that you're hearing here is just honestly small stuff compared to the fraud and corruption that happens in the industry on a daily basis. And I'm not even going to go into that because that's a can of worms that the city can't even touch. But there needs to be laws against kickbacks. There needs to be laws against, like, treatment centers actually paying clients to get clients into the treatment center. I mean, I don't want to open the can of worms, but if you want to speak to me privately, this issue goes way beyond just house managers. It's a state level. It's happening in Florida and California where Florida and California are adopting anti-kickback logs and I think we need to do the same. And until we treat the whole beast, you know, you can cut out this cancer, but if it has lung cancer, heart cancer, and other things too, we're not going to address it. We're going to spin our wheels here all day long and talk about sandwiches and doorknob height requirements and duh, 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 duh. So, we need, we do need to get at the meat and potatoes. And as long as there's financial incentives for these sober livings to exist through fraudulent means, it's going to continue to exist. I'm talking tens of thousands of dollars. So, until we address it at the state level and make it illegal for kickbacks and to make it illegal for other things to stop occurring and the owners and operators who are fraudulently operating in this town, then we're not going to do anything. House managers are the least of your concerns. They're the lambs that we're getting distracted on. There's really wolves in this community and they need to be targeted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mo Michael and I represent another facility here in town. And I just came today to talk, there's so much negative, I don't know, when I, when I tell people what I do in this community, that I'm a counselor, that I work in a facility, there's a lot of negative feedback that I receive. And I'm in favor of what you guys are doing. I went down and spoke in front of the Senate to get 2107 passed because we do need this regulation. And there's a lot of great places in this town helping a lot of people. And I'm not sure how it happened with Prescott, but I'm one of those outcomes. I came to Prescott in 2007 and I'm still sober and I'm here. I went back to college and I am buying a home in Prescott. I'm supporting Prescott's. My kids go to school here and so, a lot of good things can happen when people come here for help. And yes, there's a lot of problems in the homes and we do need to tighten it up. And I'm totally in favor of it. And I just wanted to let you know that there's a handful of places here that want this to happen. We really do and we're going to help any way we can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I disagree with the guy in the back that my work with this and what you can do right now, the weak link is the supervisor requirements. House Bill 2107 with the three things, the written notifications, supervisor requirements, an operational plan that facilitates the recovery process. The two things that the ordinances can do are the last two things that House Bill 2107 gives you the power to do. My work with what I've been doing with the industry and with the people and talking to the residents in the community, I believe, really stems from the breakdown of no qualifications and no house managers. The power as far as going through the insurance and it is way beyond the purview of this council, but I think that you can really go as hard as you can with these ordinances and make it as strict as possible with the supervisor requirements. And I mean that as far as having an awake staff 24/7 and really having as many requirements as you can, as far as having no smoking, things like that, I don't even think that's even possible. But as far as what these kids come in here to do and where they go to the clinic, it really comes down to a couple hours a day, a couple days a week. The vast majority of the time, these kids are sitting and they're at the mercy of these house managers. And with no qualifications, I say this again and again with all these groups I meet, you actually have to have a class to slice lunch meat in this town and nothing in order to run a home. And this is, really has to stop. So, you people are on the cutting edge of what you can do and you will set the standard for not only the state, but across the country because that's what the power of 2107 is giving you. So, I'm really hoping you can push the envelope here and you see what, what you can do and don't be afraid to do this because the bottom line is it is about the standard of care in these homes. And I really believe, once you have adults in these homes, then what happens in the neighborhoods will rectify themselves. Because right now, these, the people in charge of these homes don't even know how to tell the rest of the ones, like, yo, knock it off. And that's what it is. When you, when you give them the tools to do that and make sure they're mature enough to do that, then I think we can really alleviate a lot of these home, the problems that are going on in the neighborhoods. So, good luck and don't be afraid to push the envelope. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Collings. I live in Prescott. I'm going to sound like a broken record, but on the permitting process and the business license, somehow, these facilities hopefully are going to be ADA compliant. It means the 36-inch wide door, the handle has to be this high. That's part of the law. They need to be, I feel, at those standards because they're protected by the Fair Housing Act and ADA. So, then they need, on their side, they got to have their facilities set up that way. And I'm hoping that the city will tie that in on the permit process and the renewal of the business license. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Powaway. I'm just curious, I'm a Prescott resident. I'm curious, is there a target number of permits that you guys are prepared to issue? Or is it whoever qualifies?
Basically, anybody that wants to have a business here, you know, in the recovery business, then they'll submit for a business license. They'll have to meet the requirements of the permit. As long as they can meet the requirements of the permit, they'll be allowed to operate.
So there's no limit to the number of homes we can have?
Mayor, there is a distance limit, so there's not clustering.
Yeah, there's a distance limit between homes. There's got to be 800 feet or more between one home from another. But there's no, like, we have 170 now, and that's the limit we can have. There's no upper limit.
That's by statute?
Pardon?
By statute?
Again, you know, primarily, the Fair Housing Act treats a group home, what we call a community residence, as a residential use. So to attempt to say only so many persons with this particular disability, or only so many homes, or group homes, for people with this type of disability can live in the city would be a blatant violation of Fair Housing Act and equal protection and a bunch of other things. So, yeah, we can't set a cap on, there's no, again, if you look at the legal analysis, we have to achieve a legitimate government interest, both intent and actually achieve, and we have to use the least drastic means available to achieve those legitimate government means. There's just, we just can't, there's just no way to set a cap.
Got it.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else?
How you doing? My name's Barry Hancock from Prescott, Arizona. And just wanted to stop and introduce myself. We're also going to be doing a facility teaching house managers. I had dropped off an agenda to all of you guys last Thursday, I believe. Did you guys get them, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So basically, I just wanted to introduce our company. I, you know, certainly concur with Mary. I think you can make a lot of difference working with the house managers, showing some guidance, and showing them a lot of things they don't know, even about their clients. I mean, we're dealing with, you know, alcoholism, drug addiction. We're also dealing with mental health, where most people aren't even familiar with that part of it. And that's one of the things we're trying to plug in to real heavily through our program is to make a better introduction to mental health, what, you know, depression looks like, what their clients have. Working, house managers working more with the clinical division to find out who they're dealing with. You have to know who you're dealing with to be able to help them. That seems to be a missing link a lot of times. So that's what we're trying to fill out through our own training. But basically, just wanted to introduce ourselves and let you know, anytime we talk or whatever, we're more than willing to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on.
Okay. I have a question before you get started.
Go ahead.
Do we not have some guidelines in the zoning code of unrelated people and how they can take up residency in a house?
Our zoning code, well, let me, yeah, let me go to, actually, I can go to this. Okay.
I think that needs to be stated over and over again.
This is our, this is in our land development code, the definition of what a community residence is. We use the term community residence. We certainly could have used group homes. They're interchangeable. Five to 12 unrelated individuals with disabilities is the sort of fundamental definition of what a group home or community residence is. So that's, you know, and it goes on, you know, it's a fairly detailed definition, you know, of what a community residence is. So it is five to 12, but let me just also say that the five to 12 is not, it's not a, 12 isn't an allowed number necessarily. You have to weave in our building code, or building and safety code, which basically says you can have two persons per bedroom, unless there's an unusually large-sized bedroom. So the five to 12 is sort of a range, but not every community residence is necessarily allowed a 12-person capacity. If it's a three-bedroom, you're looking at six. With a reasonable accommodation, maybe you add one or two more. But again, it's not like we're allowing 12 persons in a three-bedroom house. So it is a five to 12 range. Four and below of unrelated persons is a matter of right. I'd also go point you down to the second paragraph, the bottom paragraph. The community residence, we break those into two types of community residence. A family community residence, where it's a relatively permanent living arrangement with people with disabilities, with sort of no limit, or as I think Roger, I'm sorry, George Worley sort of defines, is you measure the length in terms of years. So if you think about a family community residence, you're really looking at sort of what the more traditional ones, persons with developmental disabilities or something like that. A transitional community residence is more temporary, and that is, the length of time is measured in months. And most of our sober living homes are going to fall within that transitional community residence. So those two definitions actually have meaning because the family community residence emulates more a biological family, and therefore it's allowed in single-family residential neighborhoods. A transitional community residence emulates more of the nature of multifamily-type housing. People rent apartment for a year, they may stay, they may renew the lease, they may move out. So under the code, transitional community residence, most sober living homes are not allowed in single-family residential neighborhoods. They're allowed, as a matter of right, in multifamily neighborhoods. So, and of course, I don't want to get into the whole grandfather legal nonconforming use, but since this was adopted, sober living homes that have a measurement of tendency of nine months, you know, a year, six months, are required to be in multifamily neighborhoods. So again, the impact on the single-family neighborhood or residence of having sort of this constant turnover of people should be reduced by that effect. In other words, a group home for the more traditionally developmentally disabled, for instance, are going to be there long-term, so they're going to be there relatively permanent. And that's the sort of nature of a single-family residential area. The nature of a community residence, sober living, that has a high turnover, six months, nine months, that's going to be more, that's going to be in multifamily zoning. So there's going to, there should be less impact of that sort of constant cycle of people coming and going on single-family residential neighborhoods over time.
But besides this definition, and because we're requiring them to have a business license through the zoning code, the land development code, aren't we recognizing these homes as businesses?
We're recognizing the operation of these homes as a business. So similar to a landlord who rents, single-family, let's say you own three homes and you rent them out, you have to have a license as a landlord operating, you know, but the homes themselves, the homes you rent out, don't have to have a business license necessarily posted in there.
So where are we any different than the county? If our code says that, would it be the same for the county, where people can go into the county zoning districts in unincorporated Yopai County and have one of these homes set up? I know back in the day, there was homes set up in Yopai County that had to do with Indian homes that were alcohol dryout homes, and they were associated with the federal government. But they integrated them into the neighborhoods, just like what's happening here.
I think the misunderstanding that I, of what, how the county, and I don't want to speak for the county, I mean, I've got enough to do here. But the county, I think, what the county does is it treats it, where it's a combined clinic and residence as a commercial use, which is perfectly acceptable. I don't think the county is treating a straightforward group home where it's just a residential use as a commercial use. And that's not my impression of what the county's doing. But again, I may be wrong on that. I'm not tracking that all that closely.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Thank you, Mayor. This could be a really cutting-edge ordinance, and if the council adopts it, it's an important step forward. It looks fairly complicated to me, which is fine, but it's going to require an enforcement team to really make sure this ordinance is followed. We can't rely on our one and only code enforcement officer to do the entire job. We've got to fund code enforcement more. So either in a mid-year budget adjustment or next year's budget, we really need to think about adding to the code enforcement team.
Councilwoman Chiswick.
Thank you, Mayor.
John, didn't we try and deal with this one time before from a zoning standpoint? And HUD said we couldn't do that. Is that a misconception on my part?
It is. We, say, in September 2013, we adopted an amendment to the land development code that HUD had, there were two separate challenges, one by the Secretary of HUD and one by an So what we did in the midst of that investigation is we revised the land, revised those amendments to what we have now. And what we have now, HUD looked at and said, this is, they actually, I think, used the term, this is cutting-edge. This could be a model for cities with Prescott's type of experience, which is, at the time, a significant clustering problem. You have to remember, the purpose of Fair Housing Act, which is what HUD looks at, is to integrate people with disabilities into the community. And then by living in a group home in a neighborhood as opposed to an institution. The problem with clustering of group homes for people with disabilities is that it creates essentially an institutional zone, where if the whole neighborhood is just simply people with disabilities living in group homes, then you're failing to achieve what the Fair Housing Act is trying to achieve, which is integration. And so when you have clustering problems like that, that's the one time where you can actually have, you can impose these 800-foot separation requirements. And it's a little counterintuitive because you almost have to wait for the problem to exist before HUD will sign off on it, you know, sort of too little, too late. However, I think our numbers, and if these numbers hold true, where we've gone from around 170 to around 110, I think that clustering problem in some areas may be kind of waning a little bit. You know, I can't tell you for certain, but as we have, and then, and then, once those numbers go down, and once those homes cease operations, then we're able to stop their legal nonconforming use or get rid of the legal nonconforming use, and then they can't re-enter that particular location if it's within 800 feet of another community residence if they ceased operations for six months. So I think we're achieving it. It's going to take time, but when we adopted the ordinance, we had 170 group homes in place. All of those were grandfathered in under, you know, for zoning purposes.
Thank you.
And in answer to Councilwoman Wilcox's question about enforcement, I have been talking with Chief Black, and she's going to be coming in with some recommendations here in the near future, so.
Let me just go back, let me go forward a little bit. So one of the things that we have to weave through all of the regulations we have when it comes to this type of ordinance is what's called reasonable accommodation to comply with the American Disability Act and Fair Housing Act. So when we talk about standards that the city adopts, and I know that your comments about, you know, adopt these really strict standards, regardless of the standards we adopt, and we have to adopt the least drastic means, as, you know, as required, there's always going to be an opportunity to ask for and obtain a reasonable accommodation. And again, it's hard to sort of go into details, but, you know, a good example would be if a home is limited to six persons, but there's a need for a number of reasons where the home needs, should have seven or eight people. There's going to be a process where the operator can come in and say, I'm requesting eight people, here's all the reasons why. And as long as it's reasonable, then we're required by law to then grant that reasonable accommodation. So these, you know, and failing to have a process to, for asking for reasonable accommodation and failing to approve an accommodation if it's reasonable can get us into lawsuits. So that's always going to be kind of over us as well. The statute, now statute, has this definition for structured sober living home. And we've gone through this before. And as I showed you before, our land development code has a separate definition for what we call community residence. So I think that, right now, the thinking is, rather than call, rather than use this exact definition in our code, any premises, place, or building that provides alcohol-free or drug-free housing, we're going to change it to any community residence that provides alcohol-free. So it has to meet this definition and that definition for this regulation to apply. And I think that makes it actually easier for us to achieve certain goals, and here's one of them. Right now, I'll point you to, I think it's page, page five on your slides, the land development code definition of community residence. If you look at that, there's a bolded italicized kind of provision in there, about three lines in. One of the things that came up was that there's an unusual or extraordinary pressure on some of our homeless food kitchens by literally white vans dropping off six or eight or 12 young men, more than likely, who clean them out. So the problem with that is, do we, you know, as we've heard, regulate how many sandwiches you have to give somebody every day? Or do we deal with it sort of on a more system level? Here's the thing. If a group, a group home for disabled has to emulate a biological family, if the group home fails to provide some type of meal program, or some type of allowance for meals, or some type of access to cooking facilities, and simply takes its residents and sends them to a soup kitchen, then the argument is that that is no longer a group home. It doesn't emulate a family, and therefore it's a rooming house, not allowed to be present in residential areas. Rooming houses are more commercial use, or like boarding houses or halfway houses, and there's a lot more limitations on where those can actually exist under our zoning code. So one of the sort of solutions we've talked about amongst the staff is to insert in the definition of community residence, the notion that the support services include meals or food to prepare meals, or allowances for meals, or that type of thing. So if you fail to do that, you're not a community residence, and therefore you're a rooming house and not allowed to be in that zoning district. So it sort of imposes it on a more global level, rather than trying to regulate, you know, two meals a day, or three sandwiches a day, or 2,000 calories a day. It's almost impossible to enforce, and I don't think it's very practical to try and do it that way. So I think that's the solution to that meals issue that came up, is to make sure that if you're going to try and exercise your rights as a group home, under the Fair Housing Act and ADA, then you have to act like a group home. And that would include the provision, somehow the providing of meals throughout the day, whether, again, it's allowances, you know, meals, or some combination thereof. So that's kind of the one, I think, that's kind of one of the solutions we're looking at for that particular issue.
We've got one question, Councilwoman Elizelle.
Thank you, Mayor. John, I'm going to take a shot at this horse that we're beating right now. Including providing meals, could that be interpreted as dropping them off at CCJ?
Well, I think we're going to, I mean, that has, that needs some refinement. I threw that in there just as kind of a concept. Obviously, we can refine it to say in the home. I mean, the simple language in the community residence. So, you know, I don't, it's going to take, again, it's going to take some massaging, it's going to take some work, because you sort of always come up with, well, what if they take them to, or I was thinking Golden Corral, you know, and that's where they eat three times a day? You know, I think that's, that would probably fall into allowance for food purchase, something like that. And so we're going to try and make this as sort of clear and simple as possible, but, you know, we can draft 100-page regulation, and there's always going to be a scaffold out there. I mean, look at the IRS code, you know? So if people want to, if people want to be bad actors, they're going to be bad actors. But I think, you know, we're going to try and sort of address that problem by way of changing the definition, rather than trying, sort of getting into the nitty-gritty of how many meals they should provide and how and what and where. The other issue I think that came up before we go kind of further is this sort of, this notion of locking kids out or lock- notion of locking kids out, or locking people out of the house. In my discussions with the industry folks, there is, they don't, I don't know if that's necessarily true. There is a point in time, and I think this is pretty standard for most of the, most of the group homes, there's a point in time where the client or the resident is required to go out and look for and get a job, or go do some, some community service, or go do something. So the concept is, is between nine and three, we don't want you sitting around the home, watching TV, smoking cigarettes, you know, just doing, we want you to start to figure out how to become a productive member of society. So from a, from a family standpoint, I think the analogy is, is you have your daughters come home from college for the summer, and you say, look, you can't sit and lay around the pool all day long, you go out and go find a job. And that's kind of the same concept, is they're trying to get these clients or these residents to go out and look for a job and get a job during the day, rather than just hang out at the house. So I don't know how beyond that, I mean, that's the explanation that I was given. So how you sort of regulate that, I don't think, I don't know if they're, if they're locked out. I think the residents, you know, it could be something as simple as they all have, you know, they have keys or access to, if the houses are on a keypad, that they have access to the house at any time. So it's, that's a tricky one to sort of address. But that's the explanation that was given to me, is that, yeah, we sort of force them out of the house during the day, but the whole idea is, we want them to be out, look for a job, and sort of start becoming a productive member of society as part of the treatment. So, you know, and I think trying to sort of regulate that they should be allowed to be in the home is going to be very difficult to enforce. But that's the explanation, and I'll defer to the industry folks to clarify that if you need to. Going forward, obviously, we're going to, like I told before, we're going to have a licensing requirement with, this sort of falls under the statute, the registration, licensing requirement with a bunch of information in it, that, so we have a really sort of a thorough sort of file on, on the operations of the home. Once the, we're going to issue permits for each, each operation, which would be tied to a particular residence. So if an operation has six residents or six homes, they get six permits to sort of make sure we know the location of those. And, and I think we talked about before, and I don't want to necessarily repeat myself, that there's going to be certain minimum standards for the operators to meet before they can get a permit. In addition to the application process, some type of background check to make sure that, you know, they haven't committed certain felonies within the last, say, seven to 10 years. And that's, and those are usually sort of bodily harm-type felonies, arson, murder, those kinds of things, or have been involved in sort of drug selling or drug distribution. Because, again, if there are sort of those types of nefarious characters who want to try and operate a community residence, I'm not sure that's in the best interest of the residents, if there's somebody there who has a relatively recent conviction for certain types of crimes. The other, the other bases for denial is if we determine, or revocation, is if we determine that the information that was provided was materially false or was misleading. So we're going to, we're going to have a fairly thorough kind of vetting of the applications before the permits issued. Again, it goes to, you know, as Councilwoman Wilcox said, there's a staffing issue with that, because there's going to be a pretty extensive kind of documentation before a permit's issued.
Councilwoman Orr.
So, so John, if we find in the permitting process that we have a home that has seven, eight residents, this is a transitional community residence, and it's in a residential community, we really can't do anything now? Or can we actually act on that and say they need to? Because they're actually violating zoning at that time.
If the community residence existed at the time the revised zoning ordinance was adopted, that's when the grandfathering begins, not after. So if somehow a transitional community residence was, somehow was located in a single-family residential area, they wouldn't have been grandfathered.
But we would not allow anymore to come in?
No, not after, I can't remember, April?
Right.
When we revised, April, a year ago?
Okay.
After we revised the land development code that second time.
Okay. All right.
Councilwoman Melzell.
Thank you, Mayor. John, and I'm just going through this from what you presented, and to add on to Councilwoman Wilcox, I'm not saying each time, each step is a different person, but somebody's going to have to receive the permit, somebody's going to have to review the permit, somebody will have to go to the home, do the inspection, life safety, building, what have you, whether it be ADA or not. And then, somebody, same person, whatever it is, will have to do follow-up inspections and all that. So there's, there's quite a infrastructure here.
There is. And I think, you know, it's also, it's sort of going to be multidisciplinary. I don't think there's going to be a single department that is going to be able to do this. I think it's going to involve many different city departments, building safety, fire, police, finance, city attorney's office, code enforcement, you know, you name it. I mean, I think it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of, because there's a lot of different pieces and parts I think we're going to look at to oversee, and I think, you know, want to sort of delegate out those, those pieces and parts to, you know, the subject matter experts in those areas. So, yeah, so it will be, you know, I'm not sure it's, the simple answer is hiring another code enforcement officer. I think it's, but I think it's going to take contribution from a lot of different city departments to make sure this works.
Now, are we allowed, you know, the business license? We have the cost-neutral fee. Have we determined what this fee is going to be?
Have not determined, there will be a fee as part of the application, but no, we haven't gotten anywhere close to figuring out what the fee should be. Because there's, I think, there's going to be, the upfront fee is going to be a lot more work-intensive than, say, if there, whether it's going to be an annual renewal fee, or a biannual renewal fee, there's, you know, there's certainly less work involved in renewal than there would be in the upfront cost.
Right. Okay.
So as part of the permitting program, the permitting program allows us to then regulate the operations going forward. So some of the rules and regulations which we want to mandate is that the occupants have to be actively participating in structured recovery programs. And then, we're going to require that the home maintain records of that. Those records aren't necessarily accessible, there's a lot of privacy and HIPAA issues, but that there's going to be a mandate. And, and the big question here is going to be, throughout this, is, does the city set the regulations for, that the operator has to meet? Or does the city say, you have to have an operating plan? And in an operating plan, you have to include all of these types of topics, and there's going to be certain minimums that they'll have to meet. But if the operation itself covers all of these types of things, then we can make a code that is not a one-size-fits-all, still has minimum standards of performance and operation and conduct, and violating your own operating standards then becomes a violation of the city code. And that's sort of one way of doing this. Rather than having this really comprehensive, detailed series of regulations, because we, you know, the alternative is, is for each home has to have a sort of operating rules and regulations, and then house rules, sort of behavior and conduct of the residents, behavior and conduct of the operator. And within each of those, we can set certain requirements, or certain areas where we want them to cover. For instance, good neighbor policy. And we can sort of describe what your good neighbor policy has to do. But do we really want to have every home, you know, have to sort of adopt the same good neighbor policy? Or is it really up to them to adopt a good neighbor policy? And if they fail to meet that, then it becomes a violation of the code. And good neighbor policies, along that topic, as I sort of digress a little bit, they're tricky, because these, this would be the only type of residence in the city that has to have a good neighbor policy in writing. So, you know, we have to sort of tread lightly in that area, because it certainly becomes an issue if somebody says, well, I have a group home, and my neighbors don't have to have a good neighbor policy. I mean, so there are, there are, you know, some of these things get kind of tricky down the road. But, so the next one, the next, I think, requirement talks about the house manager. Either residing in the group home, or a number of people acting as a house manager who work on a shift basis, who are present at the group home 24-hour basis. My understanding is there are some, I mean, it's done a number of different ways. There is a, there could be house managers that live in the home, and they're there 24/7. There are house managers that work in shifts, 12 hours, or three and a half days, and then, and then they get another house manager comes in for the other three and a half days, so there's two house managers. You know, the, the issue of whether the house manager has to be awake or not, you know, we can include that in, in our ordinance. The challenge is going to be, how do you enforce that? How do you really enforce that? I think one of the concepts we came up with is, we can require that the house have a curfew. And then, and then you punish the impact for the violation, rather than try and put in some sort of preemptive language that says the house manager has to be awake. So in other words, if there's a, if there's a penalty to the operator, if the resident is caught violating the house rules curfew, now the potential revocation of a permit, is that sufficient, is that a sufficient enough regulation versus saying, your house manager has to be awake 24/7? Because, again, how are we going to be able to tell if the house manager is awake 24/7? Do we, you know, there are, so I think that's, that's some of the challenges with how, with the house manager, and how that house manager operates. So I'll kind of open that up for discussion.
Councilwoman Melzell.
Thank you, Mayor. John, similar to liquor license, an establishment that sells liquor, if you get so many violations, you're at risk of losing your liquor license. Would that be the same repercussions in this?
Yes. We, in terms of enforcement, I think there's two issues. One is, revocation could occur, revocation of permit could occur if there's a high number of violations of the code, or of their own rules or regulations, or if there's one significant violation of the code, or their house rules or regulations, either of those, or combinations, but either of those could result in a revocation of the permit. And there's going to be, there's going to have to be a due process type provision in the code that says, if we're going to go attempt to revoke, then there has to be some type of appeal by the operator to at least get minimum, minimal due process, whether it's a hearing, or whether it's a written appeal, you know, we really haven't gotten to the weeds on that one. But, yeah, that's, that's going to be the primary enforcement tool, is if some, if there's a bad actor who violates the city code, or violates their own rules and regulations, and is not providing proper supervision and care for the clients in the home, then we revoke the permit. The rule, the ordinance is going to say, you can't operate a community residence, structured sober community residence, for, without a permit. If you don't have a permit, we go to court, we get an injunction to require the cessation of operations of the, of the, of the home.
Mayor Podham.
Thank you. Cause and effect consequence, John. Now we revoke the operator's license, and what are you going to do about the eight or 10, six, four people that were residents living there? Now what do you do?
Well, I think that part of that's going to have to be, work out some sort of plan with the, with the other folks in the industry, that, you know, if there's some type of clearinghouse of information that, and again, these things aren't going to happen overnight. They, you know, a closing down, revocation permit's not going to happen overnight. If we revoke a permit and they continue to operate, we have to go to court. So there's going to be a process by which we can then contact other of the sort of good operators in the city to say, this, this is a potential for, for closing down.
Here again, going, going back a number of years. I mean, this isn't the first time we've dealt with this issue. It's probably the closest we've come to clarifying a lot of the nuances within the issue that we're dealing with, not only disabled medically, maybe emotionally, maybe mentally. I mean, there's a number of different things that you're now qualifying as to what you're dealing with when you have sometimes permanent medical changes, whether it be an alcoholic, or whether it be somebody who was subjected to drug addiction, et cetera. There's physiological changes that take place that are now sort of permanent on some of these folks. So, you know, we have to kind of be real careful on cause and effect consequences of what we're trying to do. I mean, would you really not have any rules of behavior of an operator who's housing folks, medicating folks, feeding folks, et cetera, that were mentally, emotionally, physically disabled, et cetera, right on down the way? I mean, I think the more thorough you can be, the better off the ordinance is going to be.
Right. And the, the, the real challenge in something like that is, if, and I would tell you this, I mean, the attempt, or the revocation of an operating permit is sort of the nuclear option. But that's when the decision is made that these residents, these clients are going to be better off somewhere else, because this operator is not supervising, not caring for, not treating, and not, and not providing the proper care and supervision for this disabled person, this vulnerable person who's trying to get through recovery. So it's, it's not something that would happen overnight. I think it would give opportunity for other industry folks to kind of maybe pick up the slack, if there's, if they need temporary, you know, housing in that transition. But I don't think we would sort of take this draconian move of, you know, trying to lock people out and kicking people on the street. Obviously, we're trying to prevent that from happening on, when the operators are big people. So I think we would have to take that into consideration in terms of, you know, what's the impact on, on the residents themselves, if we revoke them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I kind of liken it to the county jail over in Cottonwood, so, okay.
Councilwoman Orr.
Yes. I guess my concern, a couple, several, about four pages worth, but I think that the thing for me, for the 24-hour, it goes back to what Mary Beth said, and that's supervision. It means someone needs to be supervising these individuals. I mean, I have been in parking lots, going to Walmart, whatever, and then the van drives up, and somebody in that van should be supervising those young people. And maybe it's part of the good neighbor policy. But when we hear stories and testimonies of, where people are sneaking out of houses, I mean, somebody should be knowing that that's going on. And, yes, it will cost more, but I don't know how we would, a minimum standard to me will be that someone is awake, and someone knows what's going on 24 hours a day with those young people. The other for me, John, you mentioned, do we, we write the standards, they bring the plans. In my opinion, I don't know how this council would ever go about our staff writing plans for 50 homes, most less 110. I believe we set the standard, they write their plans, but at some point in time, those plans are going to have to be reviewed.
Right.
And that, that takes, goes back to what Jean was saying, and Greg was saying. I believe that's a better route to go, but I believe the standards need to be, they need to be high.
Understood. And, and, again, you know, as difficult or as challenging as it is to come to draft and work and create this ordinance, if and when it's adopted, that's when the real work's going to begin. I mean, let's face it. I mean, that's when it's going to take a lot of effort by city staff, by the industry folks, by the community to really make, make it work. So there is, there's a, there's a lot involved here in doing this. And so, but I, I think that what we're, what I'm going through today is, I want to just make sure that I'm covering the topics that you all think, the topics that you all think need to be in, and if there's others that we're not, we don't include, we certainly, almost certainly want to know, so we can try and include that, without kind of getting too down into the weeds, because then we need to go back and start writing.
And one final comment I'd like to make, and that goes back to what Justin said, I don't want to just gloss over that. He talked about kickbacks. I mean, I'm reading about these things, and I know it's going on nationally, but it's probably going on right here. And if there is fraud, if we, if in our permitting process and things, we find that there's illegal activity going on in any of these homes... there's illegal activity going on in any of these homes, where do we go? What do we do? We don't, we don't just gloss over that, so we report this and?
The question is, is, and my impression is that it's not necessarily illegal. It may violate the insurance company's rules for, you know, the insurance companies don't allow for kickbacks, but that, all that does is stop the insurance company then paying or, or, you know, paying benefits. It may not be necessarily illegal. It's, it's a really fine line between, is it just simply a finder's fee or is it, you know, but I, but I, you know, I've heard some horror stories where you actually get ringers for like going into group homes, list, enlisting people and taking them all and flying them to Florida, you know, getting, going down to Phoenix and flying them all to Florida to another group home, and they're paying these, these residences $1,000 to go to a different place, you know? So, you know, a lot of, so a lot of, again, I would agree that with Justin on that one though, that is, that's sort of-
That's another level.
It's, it's, yeah, I mean, it would be almost impossible for us because the problem is, is if there are, if those kinds of transactions are going on, unless they're happening sort of in the city of Prescott, if they're happening in Florida or, or, you know, Phoenix or even worse, Florida, it's almost impossible for us to enforce it and prosecute it. So those, those are more global of, and I know that there are some letters from various senators and our congressman to the GAO to look into some of this stuff because that may be, that may be a federal issue, especially if you're dealing with interstate commerce. So, but if, if it's, if it is a significant problem, it probably is a federal issue.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Some of it's federal, John. Not only do you have some insurance fraud going on, you've got social security fraud going on. I'll go back to something that was brought up a little earlier, and that's the criminality of certain things. I mean, it's still illegal to sell illegal drugs. It's still illegal to use illegal drugs. Now that you've got an OD in someplace that's supposed to be set up to treat this, all of a sudden you have negligent homicide, I mean, what are we doing from a legal perspective on prosecuting what's taking place in some of these places? So there's a whole lot more in working out how thorough we can make certain things because the punitive measures on behavior have to be addressed. I mean, we haven't even touched there yet.
Right, and, and whenever we look at adopting a regulation, there's sort of two ways to approach it. You can do this sort of preemptive regulation where you, you, you put into a code a bunch of things you either have to do or aren't allowed to do, and if you do any of those things or fail to do the things you're required to do, then you, you know, that in and of itself is a, is a punishable act. Then there's the sort of, the other side of that is, and it's just, it's the punitive, you know, ordinance where it says, you're, all you're, all you're looking at is regulating the impact. And I'll give you a, for instance, and again, probably not the greatest example, but if you were to decriminalize DUI and say, it's perfectly fine to go, to drive around with blood alcohol, however, however, if you get into an accident, you know, you're going to prison for 90 years. If you go in an accident, you hurt somebody, you're going for life. I mean, there are those, you know, that's always sort of the debate, do you do, do you do sort of the regulatory kind of ordinance or do you use something that's just strictly punitive? And, and, I mean, and that's the challenge here is, do you just, you just punish the impacts and the outcomes or do you try and prevent those from happening? I think we're trying to do the, that one, the preventing it from happening in the first place with this. So it's, it's a little bit, again, it's, it's a lot more complex because you have to think about a lot more situations. What about this and what about that? So, and again, so we're trying to kind of, we're, we are doing it still at the 10,000-foot level. I think we've kind of dropped altitude from 30 to 10 in Pilot Linko, but as we go forward, we're going to, we're going to start drilling down into the specifics.
Councilman Chisca.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, you know, it was mentioned in public comment about requiring drug testing on a consistent basis for house managers. Is that getting too far into the weeds?
I don't think so. I think, I think in certain, you know, the, analogize it, say, with a CDL license holder, you can require an employer to drug test a commercial driver's license holder, there has to be some sort of public safety issue with it. So we can certainly look at that to see whether that would violate. I don't think off the top of my head, it has, it in and of itself violates, but we have to come up with a rational basis, say, what is it we're trying to prevent from happening in drug testing? We can't mandate drug testing of the residents, that's a separate issue. I suspect that most of the good operators do on a regular basis or, you know, a random basis. But as an employee of an operator, I think we can mandate sort of random urinalysis, which I think, which is usually the more effective way of doing it because there's a whole bunch of tricks if you have a regular UA, there's a whole bunch of ways you can, you can get, you can fake it.
Okay, and since we don't really have like a county health department, who would regulate something like this? Who would look at it?
Here's, here's the, here's what we would do, I think, in that regard. We would simply require that they keep records of, of their random urinalysis of group home, of house managers, and those would be subject to inspection, probably would have to have some redaction going on because again, the names may be, maybe sort of, maybe HIPAA issues and privacy issues with those. But, you know, part of the requirement be, because if, if the house manager is also, you know, because there are situations where the house manager is also someone in, in that program's treatment, then that's a little bit more problematic than someone who is maybe done with the, sort of that initial phase of treatment, is actually looking for a job in the industry, they may not be in that, in that, necessarily in that program. So they're strictly an employee versus if someone's sort of a resident slash house manager, that's, that's a little, you know, that's a little, that one, those people, I think, if they, if they failed to maintain sobriety, then the house rules or the house operating rules are going to say, well, what do you do with that person? Do you evict that person? Do you find an alternative housing for that person? Do you segregate that person for a certain period of time within, in another one of your facilities? Do you find alternative living arrangements? You know, what is that? And again, we have to remember, these are all adults, so at the end of the day, we can regulate what the operator does when they evict somebody, but if somebody just says, I'm out of here, and they decide to live on the street, it's not a lot you can do with that person unless they're, unless they're deemed mentally incompetent by a court. So that, that is always that potential problem. There's no, there's no failsafe in that, in that area.
Councilwoman Ohr.
I just want to verify something that Councilman Mayor Protem said, and that's illegal activity in any of these homes should be a reason to revoke a permit. I mean, I, if you, if you find out that there's drug dealing going on in any of these homes, why would we allow that to stay?
I think, I think, I think that could be, yeah, because there's a man, there's a requirement, first of all, there's, there are a couple of requirements. A requirement is that all of the residents have to be in some sort of structured legit, recovery program. A, someone who relapses, there's going to have to be something that says in their operating rules, what do you do with that person short of kicking him out on the street if you're going to evict them? And we'll get, and I'll get to that in a little bit. It's going to require the house manager also are sober. It's going to require, we're going to require that there's, they have visitor policies that say visitors can't come in, can't, first of all, visitors have to be sober. Visitors can't bring any controlled substances or alcohol. And then on, sort of going all over that, is that if, if, if you're claiming a disability in Fair Housing Act protection and you use a controlled substance, you lose that Fair Housing Act protection.
The whole house, yes.
No, that residence, that resident who violates does. Now, if, if, if the house is, so if, if there, if there is regular or frequent or common use of controlled substances in a house, I would sort of argue that that's probably not a community residence group home. It may be. So the big question is, is it, yeah, that, that certainly could be, sort of be grounds for revocation of the permit. You know, so, but again, there's always going to be that due process element to it. But if, if there's, if the residents are not being, again, this goes to the supervision issue, if the residents aren't being supervised properly and there's frequent or common drug or alcohol use in a home, then the question is, are these, you know, is this really a group home for, for recovering persons or is it just simply people living together using drugs and alcohol? And so it trigger, it will trigger a lot of, a lot of, that's what I'm thinking, enforcement tools. Okay, kind of getting, again, into, this is what we're talking about, this, this operating plan, and this is pretty much out of the statute itself, but it's going to, it's going to have the, you know, and will have certain minimum requirements about what the operating plan has to have. Discharge planning, I think, is critical. Property maintenance is critical, noise abatement. Again, these are going to, these are going to be consistent with what we already have on the books, disruptive property ordinance, property maintenance ordinance, those kinds of things. Couple of options to kind of consider as we go forward is the relapse and discharge policy. You heard it today, one, one, one method is to notify family prior to eviction from a house. Now, the challenge there is obviously if, if the family members are far away, they may not be able to immediately respond. Another option are time limits as to when somebody can be evicted. In other words, unless there's an immediate threat to the residents of the house, you can't kick somebody out between the hours of, say, 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Or maybe they change, in other words, so it gives the person the opportunity during the day to find alternative housing. There's also a require, there could be a requirement for alternative, you know, referrals to other homes or relocate to one of their, one of their other homes, you know, so, but the, the minimum standard again is going to be to avoid, when there's a eviction or discharge due to a relapse, is to avoid just putting that person out onto the street. That's going to be sort of the minimum requirement, and how the operator then avoids doing that, you know, there's probably many different mechanisms and tools in the toolbox, but at the end of the day, I don't think there are any, you know, adolescent or juvenile recovery homes here, I think they're all adult. So the, at the end of the day, that adult is, is, can make his or her choice, and so...
Let's just clarify that word adult, okay? Because we keep hearing about these poor kids, not everybody who's in alcohol or drug rehabilitation is 21-years-old. You've got people-
Eighteen and older is what I mean.
That's correct. I mean, you've got a lot of people out there that are 60 and 70-years-old that are also drug addicts and alcoholics, so.
Yeah, yeah, and so what we're talking about is, we're talking about illegal adults, 18-years and older that, that get to make those choices. We're also not talking about, because what's not including, included in, in this regulation are, you know, parolee or probation houses, those are regulated completely separately. Those aren't considered group homes for purposes of Fair Housing Act if, if it's a mandate by a court, whether it's as a function of probation or parole. Those are completely separate kind of operations regulated generally by county probation office here or the state, but those aren't allowed in residential areas and resident, in, in single-family residential for the most part.
What do you mean, for the most part?
Well, you know, our zoning would not allow that in, into, into single-family because they're not considered a, a group home under Fair Housing Act. They're considered essentially a quasi-government kind of function, even though it may be an operator who has a contract with the government. So the, those are, most, as I, practically speaking, a lot of times it's, it's older, you know, apartment buildings or, that are occupied or even old converted, you know, motels or things like that. It's rarely going to be sort of a single family, because, and those have an even higher level of sort of supervision where, you know, because it's, it's a function of, you're, you're there because of a court order. So those don't fall within that Fair Housing Act protection, and those are not something we're going to attempt, we're regulating with our ordinance because those are already regulated through the county. So these again are some, some ideas on how to avoid that streeting problem if someone's evicted, and certainly there are plenty others that, that we can, we can require to be incorporated in the operator's operating plan. So again, one of the issues I think is, two issues are, you know, compliance with all the other city codes, that's certainly going to be a requirement. And the other one is, is where the, the operator rents a home from oftentimes an out-of-state owner and essentially misleads or lies to the out-of-state owner that this is going to be their primary residence and it turns out it's a group home, or a sober living home, and the group, the owner doesn't find that out until after fact. So part of the application process will be a copy of the lease that indicates on the face of the lease that this is going to be for a sober living home so that the landlord, owner, it has that protection rather, because we, I've actually seen firsthand where people show me a lease and it's a group home and it says, it's, I forget the guy, I don't remember the person's name, as my primary, and the use was primary residence, and it was just a non-ali. So we can make sure that that's part of the application packet, again, to protect the, the homeowners, the property owners down the road. This goes to the issue, you know, the, the rules and regulations have to prohibit the use of alcohol or controlled substances, any prescription or non-prescription controlled substances where they can be abused. And then none of, none of the group homes we're talking about actually take possession, if, if, if a resident or client has prescription medication, the, the, the group home is not allowed under state law to then take possession of that and to sort of hand out meds, that would require medical licensing essentially. So they have to have a program or policy or that says, how do you, how do you manage that, that patient or that client in his or her use of that prescription medication and to make sure that he doesn't, he or she doesn't abuse it or that somebody else in the home doesn't get it? So that's going to have to be part of their policy. So when the, when the home rules and regulations prohibit the use of alcohol or prescription drugs or non-prescription drugs that could be abused, and also have a policy that, that regulates the possession, use and storage of prescription medications, if, if those are violated, in other words, if those house policies or operating policies are violated, that amounts to a violation of the city code, and that could then result in some punitive action up to and including revocation. So that's how we get, kind of get there, is we, we don't necessarily, we may not necessarily want to say, your prohibition on, I mean, that's pretty black and white, but you, how you regulate the, the handling of your client's prescription drugs has to, you know, has to meet some minimum standard, and how you sort of achieve that standard, the mechanics, you figure it out. We're not, we're not going to want to tell you how to, you know, the means and methods, we're going to tell you what the standard is. And the standard could be something as simple as you have to prevent abuse of prescription drugs by your clients of their own prescriptions or by other clients of, of other person's prescriptions. That has to be a standard in, in your, how you figure, how you do that, that's up to you. But if you fail to meet that standard, then that's a violation of the city code. So that's how we kind of get there, without trying to sort of come up with a one-size-fits-all type system. You look pondering over there, Councilwoman Cox.
Just amazed at how all this is going to be enforced.
I know.
And some more, you know, again, another sort of inter, set of operating rules for, for the house, that the whole, house rules have to be posted on the site so everybody's aware of them. They have to include consequences for violations, including up to short-term and permanent eviction. So again, if the house rules are violated by the, by the residents and, and the, and the operator then doesn't take action consistent with its own house rules, then that could be a violation of the code. Fallen? You look, you look like-
But isn't that eviction going to have an unintended consequence of turning out more people on the street?
But then you, you apply the, the relapse eviction or the eviction regulations as well. So you can't just evict out onto the street, you have to notify family or emergency contact. You can only evict during certain hours of the day. You have to provide for three, at least three referrals to an alternative residence. You know, those kinds of things that, that try and address that problem of just kicking somebody out in the street. I mean, I, because one of the issues is going to be, if you get kicked out of the house at 10 o'clock at night, there's nowhere to go oftentimes. You get kicked out of the house with three referrals, and, and, and again, we can't force an adult to go get a hotel room, or we can't force an adult to go down to Phoenix and buy a ticket and fly home. That's just, that's just something we can't do, practically speaking, constitutionally speaking, we just can't do that. But we have to be able to set again, certain standards that say, these are the things you have to do as an operator to try and ensure that, that this resident just doesn't end up on the street. Is it going to be 100%? It never is. I mean, that's the reality, but you have to have certain standards that, that they have to comply with in order to try and at least mitigate the problem. Other rules, we talked about this a little bit before. Other rules, we talked about this a little bit before, prohibiting level-two, level-three sex offenders in these residents, those are considered an immediate threat to the neighborhood and the Fair Housing Act allows us to prohibit certain people. We talked about the visitation policy that they have to have, and then a good neighbor policy, which I think is kind of self-explanatory. A lot of this, by the way, the, one of the ideas in this is, a lot of this enforcement, or at least reporting, is going to be self-reporting. It's going to be reporting by other residents. We're going to try and encourage the residents themselves to report violations. In other words, use your sort of, bad, chain of command, use your, use your, you know, contact your operator if you see violations going on, and then that operator has an obligation to go and fix things. But if that operator doesn't, doesn't resolve problems, then we're, you know, we want to encourage residents to come to whomever it is, whether it's code enforcement, whomever, to report violations of the code, and then that will give us an opportunity to look into it, or neighbors for that matter, too.
Counselor Mazzesca.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, John, I hear all this, and it doesn't surprise me that the State Health Department didn't want to touch this with a 10-foot pole. This is far beyond the KISS concept, and I really do think that we are getting so far in the weeds, and it's becoming so unenforceable, that we really, from my standpoint, we need to bring it back a little bit and, you know, just, just make sense of it. I mean, you know, there are so, there's so much up here, I don't know how we're ever going to get all this done and how we're going to enforce it. And, you know, maybe I'm looking at the dark side of this thing, but, you know, this is just getting a life of its own.
John, on the reporting in the House, would that be required, like, in the, oh, the house rules that are posted, would it be like a right-to-know board, so that would have to be posted in a conspicuous place in every house? A phone number that calls in case that they're in violation?
Right, that kind of thing. So that you, if you're, if a resident, a client who lives in the house sees a violation, you know, the normal response is you go to the house manager and say, "Hey, so-and-so, I think so-and-so's stoned," you know, and if, and if that house manager doesn't take action to figure out what's going on, then that resident, that client should be encouraged to then sort of call up the chain. And at some point, if it's, if they're not getting any response, then they call the city.
And if I also could address Steve's comment, I agree, Steve, there's a lot of depth, and you know me, I'd get rid of half the code book that we currently have, but we have a problem in the town and we want to have as many tools in that toolbox. Regardless of, at this point in time in our history and where we are right now, whether we can enforce it or not, we need to have them on the books and maybe the fee, the application fee is cost neutral. Maybe they find out through analysis that a permit is $2,000, and we're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars for the city to hire a couple people to do this. So, you know, there's all kinds of avenues there. And I agree with you, that it's, it's huge, but we, I think we need to go there.
Oh, I have no doubt that we need to go there. It's just where we go. And, you know, are people going to sit back and laugh at us and go, "There's no way you guys could ever do this." That's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about doing something that's enforceable, that is reasonable, and that the city as the entity which has to enforce this, that it fits with what we do.
Counselor O'Meara.
And I would like to go back to what Glenn Martin said when he came, said, you know, let's, let's look at what we can do as soon as possible, some, certainly the 24-hour, seven days a week, an exit strategy, drug test, and certainly the class, we've got that going already as far as the content of the class. So there are things that we can do, and then the others, I think the others will come. And I will tell you, it's a responsibility of these homes to have these plans. I will be, hopefully, many of them already have plans, but they need to come to this standard. And so I do think it's very, I do think it's doable. And I think we have to do it, because if these homes aren't, if there's illegal activity going on in these homes, if they are streeting kids, if they don't know what these folks in those homes are doing for 24 hours, seven days a week, they need to be closed. We need to say, you know, you, three strikes, three strikes and you're done. They need to be responsible, and if it's a permitting process, and if that's what makes it happen, that's what needs to make it happen, because our communities are being changed by this. Certainly, we see, I don't want to call them kids because they're, they're slightly younger than me, but we see them on the street, and I just feel that we need to get control of this. So I know it was one of the things that I was hoping that we would get done. I've gone, I think I've gone to all of the ad hoc committee meetings, I went down to all of the ones down at the state, and I, I will tell you, we've all worked hard to get to this point, and so I think we need to stay focused, and let's come up with some doable ordinances that will help us control of this and put the responsibility where it belongs. Responsibility belongs in these homes, and it belongs on these operators. And the fact that they're not doing this and that they're giving this industry a reputation of being just flyby, I mean, it's their responsibility, but it's our city, and so I believe if we set these standards, I want high standards, not minimum standards, and I think we can get it done. I appreciate the work that Glenn Martin and that committee's done to get us to this point. So it does seem just unsurmountable, doesn't it, Steve? Yeah, but we can do it.
Counselor Blair.
Well, we talked about responsibility to the community, I would like to ask, anything's going to be enforced as long as you have the money and the tools to do that. So how capable or able are we to assess a fee to these drug and alcohol facilities to cover the cost of our code enforcement officer and maybe a canine that's with them when they inspect these places?
Yep, there you go.
I mean, again, we're talking about being strapped for money, as we always do when it comes to public safety issues, and when we have a general fund that really sucked the wind out of everybody, how do we provide the tool to give to our code enforcement people in our police department to make sure these rules are followed?
Mayor, if I may, that is going back to what the city attorney said very early on in this long discussion, what we're working on now isn't just this ordinance and all of the aspects of the ordinance, but we have experienced as a city doing a lot of permitting and enforcing things, maybe not before they happen, but after they happen, coming back and working together. The special event permit process is a good example of how we bring very disparate aspects of our operation together to make sure that things go on safely. So this is a much more complicated version of that, but we do have a lot of departments, we work together very closely, and so operationalizing this is really going to be a matter of bringing together, how do we review upfront, which obviously will have a huge influx when this comes on, because we have homes that are here. But then as we go on through the process, it will be a more regimented, you know, as someone comes in, we go through a process, much like when someone comes in for a building permit. And so we have processes like this throughout the city where all departments work together, where we move things through smoothly, we have checklists, and we come up with what are our high priority things. If something violates, you know, a red checkmark, we're going to be looking way more closely than if, you know, we get through all of the 10 highest priority things and we don't see something. And what we're working with the city attorney's office right now is to look at how other states, because mostly at the state level, there's regulation, how do they regulate that? How do they do that initial intake and review? And what will work for the city of Prescott as we move through those processes? So that process is really going to be 90% of the battle, and then how we implement that process with personnel, something that we're working through with the departments.
And just, let me add, because at this point, the next section is the training program, which I think we've pretty much talked sufficiently enough about, so I really have nothing else to present. But you have to remember, too, that even DHS does investigations based on complaint, for the most part. You know, so in other words, regulatory agencies very rarely sort of are proactive in going out and doing inspections and doing things. I mean, it's oftentimes, more often than not, it's based on a complaint of something, whether it's OSHA, whether it's DHS, whether it's DEQ, I mean, you know, probably 80, 90% of enforcement actions are based on some complaint. So a lot of this is going to be driven, you know, the enforcement actions are going to be driven by complaint. And so if the residents in the homes are not being properly supervised, you know, we'll have to, or for that matter, if house managers don't think that they're getting the proper support from the operator and supervision isn't, isn't going on, and there are violations of city code, you know, we have to have, we can, mechanically, there's a lot of things you do, you have a hotline even, that, you know, allows for complaints to come in, even anonymously, and then, you know, we send out whatever team we send out to investigate that complaint. So mostly enforcement in these types of situations are complaint-driven.
And I don't like that. It's real simple. I mean, you can't afford it any other way, because we're in a situation that we have to be reactive, but to be responsible, we'd be proactive, and that's what we're just talking about with this whole bill, is being proactive. And to be proactive and have the strongest bill that we can have, the strongest policies to regulate these things, then we fall apart when all of a sudden they're driven just upon a complaint.
And again, I said at the very beginning, this is going to be, there's going to be a big policy decision for you all, and that is, do you want to adopt something like this, but there's going to be a staffing and cost issue involved? And that's going to be, that's the tension I'm hearing right now. I mean, it is, it's going to be a decision. We can come up with a series of regulations and rules and requirements for operators to meet in order to maintain their permit, but that doesn't come free.
I think, if I may, very quickly, we also have to remember that no matter how much staff we have, they cannot go into your residence, which is what this is, residential in nature, and see if you're awake at night to make sure. There's some reality to this, that regardless of how much money or staffing we put into it, this is America, and we have certain rules and regulations that we also will have to incorporate in regardless of what our desires are and what we'd like to see happen, you know, as a community. There's a reason we're going at it like this.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mayor, and I don't want to belabor it, John, because it's getting late. We've got another meeting to do. On my mind, though, you know, my store was here before the smoking ordinance, and there were roads that were posted a different speed limit than what's posted now, and the laws changed, but guess what? We all got to comply. We don't get to call grandfathered rights. We still got to subscribe to the law as it's on the books today.
That's right.
A couple of things I'd like to go ahead and say, and, you know, I've had one insurance company come to me and say that whatever we have in the way of an ordinance, they're going to make that a requirement in their policy. So if we say that, you know, there has to be trained house managers, it's going to be required in their policy that a person can only go to a home that has trained house managers. If it says that they have to be awake 24 hours a day, or it has to be full-time supervision, then that's what's going to be in the insurance policy, or else they're in violation, they can lose their insurance. The same thing on an exit policy. So, you know, I think what the insurance industry wants to do is step up and make our ordinance part of their policy, and then, you know, that's going to require the people, the members, they call them the members, to actually ensure that the home is consistent with their policy, or else they can't remain there. So I think that's one thing we can look at. Again, now, talking about the industry, I think it's very important that, you know, we had the recent roundtable workshops over at Yowby College. We had, I think we had close to 30 folks from the industry that were there. They all said the things that we're trying to put in this ordinance are necessary. I didn't hear one that said it wasn't. Now, they were worried about the 24-hour supervision, that was going to be somewhat costly, but I didn't hear one that said, "No, we shouldn't do that." So I really think that what will happen, and I think one of the things we have to do in this position up here is, we have to be optimistic, or we shouldn't be sitting here. So I think, you know, rather than looking at this pessimistically, I really think a lot of the homes will want to step up. I think they will want to be seen as being the better homes, and I think the bad ones will fall out just by natural attrition and process. So I will say, though, we didn't get into the one on training, but I think we do need to look at having some kind of recurring training. You know, the Mayor Proten brought this up some time ago, and so I think there ought to be something that indicates that, you know, because I know of people that take CPR, I think they have to have recurring training within six months or a year to make sure that they, they still remember how to, you know, to do the processes. So there's got to be some kind of limited retraining or recurring training that has to be provided or required of the training managers. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We'll be moving on to our voting meeting here in about 15 minutes. Thank you.